Great, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March 14th Planning Commission meeting. And we're going to start with our roll call.
All right. Styles?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Zaremski?
Here.
Osterholm?
Here.
We are expecting Carmen Brown. We also have Planning and Zoning Administrator Denise Swinger, Village Solicitor Amy Kemper. We're blanking chip. Sorry, blanking chip. Sorry so much. She also knows a lot about money. That was confusing me for a moment.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We're going to review the agenda. And one of the things that we are going to change is that we're going to put our new business first, which is looking at the requests from the Glen Helen Association. And then everything else will be in order. Okay. So then our next order is review of our minutes. And what I will ask, does anyone have any changes to the minutes? I'm not hearing any, so I will move approval of the minutes. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Everybody will approve the minutes. Everybody who, in agreement, say yes?
Yes.
Yes? Anybody opposed? Okay. Then our next are communications. And we have quite a few. Do I need to go through all of these?
I can go through and just give an indication as to who's writing about what, if you'd like. That's generally what...
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay. So we have a number of folks who wrote in in support for the zoning reform proposals. We've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of those folks. We had Sue Parker writing in support of the Home Inc. final PUD plan. Steve Kahn in opposition to the final PUD plan for Home Inc. And then Matt Raska sent some pretty interesting literature on ADUs.
We just got Colin's thing today.
We've had Steve Kahn's thing, but we do have, Richard Zop was, I'm sorry, recently added in his, he made a number of comments about the zoning reform.
Okay. And we will come back to council and committee reports when the council representative gets here. We will be having public hearings on a number of things this evening. And we also have this place for citizens' comments. If you have any comments for anything that is not on the agenda, now is the time that you come forward. And whether you have a comment or if you're going to talk at a public hearing, if you come forward and state your name, I will also ask that you keep it to two minutes. And I'm going to ask Judy to time it. So when your two minutes comes, there'll be a ding and we'll ask you to sit down. We appreciate all the comments, but we're just trying to keep it within a reasonable amount of time. So I guess we will go on to our new business, which is the low-density residential. This is on behalf of Glen Helen Association Property Committee, an application asking for approval for a modified parking lot design. Denise, do you want to talk about it?
Certainly. So Dirk Lakovich-Vangorp is the applicant on behalf of the Glen Helen Association. He submitted the application seeking approval for a modified parking lot design. This will be at their 1063 State Route 343 location. And it will be a parking lot that will be 120 feet by 220 feet. It'll contain 82 parking spaces, which includes three ADA compliant spaces. They are planning to have a hard surface paving of either concrete or asphalt. They are proposing, we're not requiring any setback requirements because it's in the middle of the Glen, so there isn't anything around it. They're proposing a managed natural landscape around the perimeter of the parking lot for stormwater management. And they'll provide a little bit more information on that for me later because there is an actual form that we have to have, their method of calculation, and I'll turn that in when I approve the permit pending this meeting. They're using the 90-degree parking pattern for their parking lot design. All the parking spaces will have parking blocks. The road that leads to the parking lot will continue to be gravelled. The driveway entrance into the asphalt or concrete parking lot shows a measurement of 31 feet to allow for ingress and egress in addition to a parking booth and gates. Their reasons for this is for the safe maneuverability, especially larger vehicles. Since then, I have talked to Colin Altman, and he did reply today that probably Dirk, you're going to want to contact him. He just wants to make sure that there's at least 12 feet of width on both sides of the parking booth because, for a fire truck to be able to get through there. And then he also is asking for a method to guarantee emergency access, whether that would be a key switch or some sort of access swipe key to get into that parking area. The reason they're here tonight, typically parking lots are something that we can handle administratively, but because they're asking for modifications to it, it required a planning commission review. Specifically, they're asking for not having the curbing, the six-inch curbing that goes around the perimeter of the parking lot, because they want to use that as part of their low-impact design elements in their stormwater management plan. So they're also requesting a waiver to the landscaping requirements. And that does require, because it is a dimensional provision, those, any of you who are on BZA will be seeing them at the BZA hearing. So what staff is recommending is that to approve the parking lot design, allowing for the removal of that curbing with the submittal of a stormwater mitigation plan. And we are asking that Glen Helen, Dirk, work with the Public Works Director regarding any future utility service to the site. That's kind of a, you know, I know you have an AES easement there that's grandfathered in. The property was annexed in 2018, so any other types of utility services will probably have to be through the village, and you can work that out directly with the Public Works Director. And that's it.
Does anyone have any questions for Denise at this point?
Denise, is there a parking lot there already?
No.
It's a new...
This is a brand-new parking lot, yeah.
And what is it?
So they have their parking lot over on Corey Street, which they are, they're going to be, going to be seeing some modifications to that. They're going to be paving that, but that is grandfathered in. But this is a brand-new parking lot.
Okay. So there's trees there now, and they're...
They'll be removing, demoing trees, yes. But they did indicate on the plan that there are some large trees along the perimeter that they intend to keep.
Okay.
Anything else for Denise before I ask somebody from the Glen to talk? Okay. Would somebody from the Glen like to come up and talk?
Hi, I'm Dirk. I don't know if this is on. Lakovich-Vangorp, village resident. So I'm a volunteer. I serve on the Glen Helen Property Committee. I'm also volunteering to manage these specific projects, which are partially grant-funded. In my daytime role, I do all of the grant management for Clark County, work for Community and Economic Development, which encompasses planning and zoning and building codes and department, all rolled into one, plus Clark County Land Bank. So it was familiar. Thank you, Denise, for reviewing the site plan. Appreciate it very much. So in answer to a couple of the questions, in addition to the engineering plan that's been provided, we engaged choice-one engineering to provide this part of the plan. There will be an additional plan that's provided by a certified design professional that shows the design of the toilet facility, utilities, electric, lighting, everything else. And of course, that will go, you know, before the building department has normal, you know, for approval and accordance with Ohio codes. The reason for the parking lot is primarily to allow better access to that particular area of the Glen, because part of the Glen's plan is to potentially build an ADA-compliant trail, because that's the shallowest slope down into the Glen. And so this parking lot will definitely have ADA spaces. We'll also make it more accessible for a school bus to be able to park, walk down the road to the Raptor Center, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So just additional parking. And we wanted to do it right, so a full engineering plan. And there'll be full design specs on the other parts of it, which is not choice-one. They do, you know, civil engineering, as I think most of you know. So in response to a couple of the previous questions, yes, there will be a full design showing gate controls, how that's going to be accessed. We talked about that. It will be all encompassed in the design, the fire department, other first responders, people that have, need to get into the Glen will always be able to access through the gate and controls. Yes, the reason for the 31-foot-wide driveway is essentially to provide about five feet of that for the width of the parking attendant booth in the middle of that, so there'll be more than 12 feet actually on either side of the entry driveway. See what other questions? It's situated under the existing power line right-of-way with permission from AED, right?
AES.
AES. AES. I'm sorry, I lose track of how they change their names. It used to be Dayton Power and Light, but AES now. And they have no problem with the parking lot being where we placed it. It's well between two poles. It won't interfere. Just an overhead line. That also mitigates the removal of trees that we would otherwise have to remove for a parking lot. So basically, all of the natural vegetation on the exterior of the parking lot is going to remain, mature trees, other growth, managed natural landscape, in keeping with the character of the Glen. It's also the reason why we're going to the Board of Zoning Appeals on no-tree islands. We're going to be surrounded by trees and woods. So...
I have a question. I wondered if you had considered, you're paving it all.
Yes.
And I wondered if you considered having a gravel base and then, I can't think what it's called, but they are recycled, that you put them on the parking, the pavers, like. The Franklin County Park System has them in theirs.
Yes.
And they work really nicely.
Yeah. That is a possibility. I mean, that would, obviously, that's not, I'm not sure that that's considered a hard surface under Yelp Springs Code.
It's not. It's permeable.
Right.
And so that's why it seems like it would be better than paving all of that.
What we are going to put into our bid documents is, if you're aware, I'm sorry, I was in construction for a long time, there is permeable asphalt, and there's also permeable concrete products now on the market. It's actually a paved asphalt and concrete that is permeable itself. So those are probably one of the options that we will ask for a bid cost on from interested bidders, in addition to concrete, standard concrete and standard asphalt, so that we can choose. And this fourth option, just recently, we've been, I think it was Mike at the last meeting, architect, chief building official friend of mine, that was volunteering some advice to the property committee, said that's yet another option, what you just talked about. A lot of it's going to depend upon, you know, cost factor.
Well, that's less, actually, than...
As a nonprofit.
Than asphalt. And I understand that permeable concrete gets to be a problem after a few years because it gets blocked.
It can be, yeah. I think it depends on the installation. It's got a bad rap. Probably depends a lot on the installation and maintenance of it. But yes, you're right. You have heard some bad stories about permeable concrete, yes.
So I have a question about the gatehouse. What, I mean, what are you, I mean, just, what are you imagining, how are you imagining that gets used? I, it's kind of out of the way, so I'm not expecting that you're probably going to have the thing full all the time. So what's, are you thinking about like events or...
No, it's, as you know, just like at the Corey Street lot, there is a parking fee.
Okay.
And it is an income stream for Glen Helen as a nonprofit. And the 80 spaces that would be used there, you know, would also create an income stream from the parking fee. So an attendant, just like at the Corey Street lot, you know.
Okay.
And the improvement there would actually include a booth for the attendant, so they're not rained upon all the time.
Okay.
Out in the open. And that's basically what it's for. And then, you know, also the gates, you know, just to control access and safety and security when the Glen is closed, which, as you know, right now is, you know, basically any time at night, you know.
Okay.
Yeah. Be like a four-by-six structure, you know, just big enough for unattended.
Sure.
Other questions?
Well, I have one. As I looked very carefully, you know, through this proposal and all, and looked at it with an eye, and I'm involved with the Active Transport Committee.
Sure.
And I was glad to see that both on the cover page and in one of the drawings, in very small print, identified that there will be bike racks.
Absolutely.
Yeah. But what I wanted to make a recommendation is if I strain a little to read the print, you're looking at having what you're calling loop-wave racks, which I believe are the undulating...
Yeah.
...shape racks. What I'd like to recommend or suggest is that you install bike racks, which are the inverted U racks. Those are the preferred racks for bicyclers. They're a little safer for the bikes in terms of how they support the bikes and secure the bike. And it's basically the rack of choice for new construction, or at least a lot of people are trying to...
Absolutely.
Push them as many.
Yeah, I, we agree with that. I think the...
Okay.
...notation from Jaclyn, the choice-one engineer, is just, that's a placeholder.
Spoiler plate.
Because we've already discussed, discussing the bike racks with, you know, like Eric from Rails to Trails and others.
Ah, okay.
Right. He's also my neighbor, so I couldn't get away with not discussing it with them.
Okay, okay. Okay, good.
It will be according to them. And I'm a cyclist myself, so I completely agree with you.
Okay, good. Good.
Other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
If there aren't other questions, then we will open...
This is not a public hearing.
Okay. We don't have to have a public hearing. So what are your thoughts? Are we, would somebody like to move to approve?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve this plan as presented.
Okay.
Or do I have to state it a certain way?
This is the middle of stormwater mitigation plan.
Right. And, yeah, with the...
Oh, yeah, 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 the conditions.
Yeah. The removal of the curb, staff recommends, the recommendation is to approve the parking lot design, allowing for the removal of the curbing with the submittal of a stormwater mitigation plan. And then also requesting that Glen Helen work with the Public Works Director regarding any future utility service to the site.
Right. So modify my...
Do you want to add, and guaranteeing a 12-foot lane width on either side of the parking booth? They've already said that there will be one, but I would like to have you put it in writing because that is the request of the fire chief.
Yeah, right, since it was requested.
And then provide MTFR with emergency access.
Yeah, emergency access.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded.
All right. Zaremski?
Uh, yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Osterholm?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Styles?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, then we will go back to, since Carmen is here now, we'll go back to our council and committee reports. Carmen, did you have anything you wanted to report from council?
Not currently.
Okay. Okay. Then we are ready to move to looking at the requests from Home Inc. I am going to recuse myself because I'm emeritus on their board, and Steven's going to take over.
So I'm going to take over for this part of the meeting. So I guess the first part, you want to do the staff report.
Sure. It's going to be a little bit lengthy than my usual reports.
Everybody get comfortable.
Prepare. Be prepared. Yeah. You know, the preliminary plan outlines the entire development, and it shows all four phases when it's fully built out. That is what you do in the preliminary plan. But because they're planning to do this in phases, then what will happen is they'll come back in phases for the final plan. They'll do that in three or four phases. So it will go preliminary plan here, preliminary plan to council, and then the four, three to four phases of the final will only come back to planning.
Okay.
All right. So also, I wanted to mention that if you end up tonight agreeing with my findings, you can make the motion specific to that code section along with any related conditions, rather than each individual requirement, which we've done in the past, voting on each one, it would just speed the process up.
Okay.
Okay. So this property consists of 10 parcels, zone PUD, totals 1.808 acres. Six parcels are owned by Home Inc., and four parcels are currently owned by the Morgan Foundation. Exhibit J, which I put in the packet, does provide the ownership agreement Home Inc. has with the Morgan Foundation to donate the land. There is an expiration date on that, but they are actively working on updating that. Home Inc. is proposing the construction of 32 units, built out in four phases. Phase one will be eight rental units, phase two, six rental units, phase three, eight rental units, and phase four, the 10 home ownership units, which face along Marshall Street. The 22 rental flats will be specifically for seniors of low to moderate income. The townhomes that face Marshall Street will be available with seniors in mind, but will be available to a broader constituency, families with children, for example. The townhomes will be two- and three-bedroom units, ranging in size from 1,082 square feet to 1,318 square feet. The rental units will be located in eight buildings, two single-story duplexes, and six two-story triplexes, with a mix of one- and two-bedroom units, ranging in size from 690 to 936 square feet. Because the parcels have already been rezoned PUD, Planning Commission doesn't have to follow check for 1280, which was amendments and rezoning. So that takes us to the qualifying conditions. In order for a PUD approval, the project has to satisfy the conditions of the qualifying conditions section. The first one being recognizable benefit. Recognizable benefit has to have at least three out of eight potential that need to be approved by Planning Commission. They had five. They had a complementary mix of land uses or housing types, which staff agreed that there are a mix of housing types unlike their previous application. This will include single-family attached, which are the townhomes and triplex units, as well as two-family duplexes, sorry. The other one that they applied for was extensive open space and recreational amenities. The total site area, being 78,756 square feet, has a building footprint, which will occupy 12,351 square feet of that. That's 15.7% of the site. You have the parking area, the driveway access will occupy another 14,356 square feet, or 18.2% of the site. The remaining 66.1% of the site is reserved for walking paths, yards, landscaping, including pollinator gardens. Of that, of that 66%, 27,955 square feet is completely free of sidewalks pass or within any required yard setback. This leaves 35.5% of the site area defined as open space per the zoning code. Now, in analyzing this, they didn't take into account the stormwater retention pond. And the stormwater retention pond is not allowed to be counted in that open space requirement unless it has a fountain feature.
I'm sorry, where on this is there, is these green, dark-green parts the pond? Or this is the pond?
Right. They're just showing little stormwater retention areas. Now...
Okay.
Okay, so they are not, they are going to come back in the final plan with a low-impact design element to this plan. So if they do have a stormwater pond, staff is not too worried about it as far as the size, because right now there's 35.5% open space. To the very minimum that they need is 15%.
Okay.
For a density bonus, they need 25%. So I'm not worried about them reaching the 25%. I think they'll be very careful to make sure that they reach that 25%. But besides that, I just took, I went ahead today and did a little exercise with measuring out like the storm, the pond that's over at Friends Care Center across the road. You're talking about 17 acres of land. That entire pond was about 9,700 square feet. So they would have to eliminate an entire lot. Even if they eliminated an entire lot, which is 7,500 square feet, they're still over the 25%, just barely, but they are. So I don't think this is going to end up being any kind of an issue for you. Then connectivity of open space. Staff agrees with them on that. They are going to have pedestrian walkways through the property. They're planning on doing a crosswalk across to Friends Care Center, which will lead them over to the Friends Care Center pathway that goes around to their pond. Friends Care Center does consider that a community asset, and even though it's private property, it's still a green corridor trail in our, as we assess it. Preservation of small-town appeal. This time, staff agrees with that because this is small, different duplexes and triplexes on this property. It's not one big massive building. As well as then coordinated development of multiple small parcels. Right now, they've got 10 parcels. Staff has asked them to do a replat on that later and just put it all under one parcel if they end up getting to the final phase. So under the qualifying conditions of 125402A recognizable benefit, the applicant needs to meet three of those eight qualifying conditions. Staff agrees that they meet all five of those. That will be up to you as Planning Commission to determine if you agree with that. And those are, those were numbers two, three, four, five, and seven of the recognizable Now we go to size. PUDs are supposed to contain a minimum of five acres, but is council already approved this for being under five acres? So that takes me to recognizing the area to PUD will not result in a significant adverse effect upon nearby or adjacent village lands. The proposed uses will complement the character of the surrounding area. The purpose and qualifying conditions of the PUD district can be achieved within a smaller area. The PUD is not being used as a means to circumvent conventional zoning requirements. In all of these, staff said the ordinance was rezoned to PUD, which was passed by council on January 22nd, 2019. So staff at that, council at that time had already approved the size. The proposed development's going to complement the existing residential neighborhood. It's going to enhance access, support, and resources for the senior community by connecting to friends... Friends Care Center across the street. The spirit of the PUD can be achieved in a smaller footprint, and it does align with the goals of the vision plan that was done in 2010, as well as the 2010 and 2020 comp This is a, for staff, this is a significant reduction in density and height from Home Inc.'s previous approved plans for the site. So I don't have any concerns with density, height, parking, or even traffic issues based on the size of the proposed development in relationship to the size of the lot. And I did talk with Johnny Burns, who in the last, when it was the 54-unit apartment building, he was going to do an independent study for traffic, and he doesn't see the need for that with this being 32 units. The PUD shall be served by public water and sanitary sewer, and yes, it will be. We've already addressed the ownership. And what will happen is if you, if, if Home Inc. gets their funding and they come back for the final, for the first days, then at that point, we'll have to have a required PUD agreement with them for, that will have to be recorded with Green County. So that will not come until we are gearing up for the final plan. For the comprehensive plan and vision, I did want to mention that, because I've seen some different things out there about the idea of this being for seniors. It was consistent with the housing needs assessment that was done by Bowen back in 2017, I think it was, which stayed, they stated at that time that 60% of all households in Yell Springs are age 55 and older, and one of the resulting priorities for housing that came out of that was to support affordable housing for seniors, low-income households, and workforce households. So staff has no issues with that. Pedestrian accommodation, the PUD shall provide for integrated, safe, and abundant pedestrian and bicycle access. And Yell Springs Home Inc. responded that all the pathways will be fully accessible for all users, whether on foot or wheel. They'll connect to parking, the unit entrances, green spaces, and public sidewalks on both Marshall and East Herman. Building forms, relationships, scale, and styles. This project's gonna consist of that series of duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes between one and two stories tall. So this is much more of a neighborhood feel. Traffic, I'm not gonna say much more about that, other than the fact that this plan, they're having all of the traffic access off of Herman Street before, because, you know, it is a through lot, they were having the driveway also ingress and ingress off of Marshall, and they took that out. So it'll all come off of East Herman Street. They will also have, and will get more of a landscaping plan with the final. But they also have, they do show in this plan these curb bump outs where they're gonna have trees in and around the parking lot. And the requirements for that is at least 30 trees, and they have more than that right now. So that should be okay. So to summarize the qualifying conditions, there's 11 qualifying conditions. A, recognizable benefit has eight potential. Staff agrees that there are five of the eight, and five out of eight, they only needed three. The size has several subsections as well, but size and all of the other conditions are, let's see, all of the other conditions along with size, they have to meet every one of those. And staff agrees that those requirements as well are met. That would be for B. Staff agrees that all four requirements are met. And for C through I, staff also agrees that all those qualifying conditions are met. So that takes us to the PUD requirements. Lot area and lot width, lot frontage, density. Lot frontage is fine, lot area and lot width is fine, they meet the requirements for that. Okay, so when they, the PUD has a table that tells you what underlying zoning there is, depending on what the project is. Previously, when they were doing the multifamily building, it was considered RC zoning, which would have been 28 units. Just because they're doing the series of triplexes and duplexes on the same property, it follows RV zoning, which is 16 units for the amount of acreage that they have. So basically, they're requesting a deviation to that maximum density with an additional 16 dwelling units for a total of 32. When we get to that point where we're discussing the actual density, I do want to remind those of you maybe who had been here before that there had been previously, there was, Planning Commission agreed to what we called a countervailing consideration that approves the density by considering fixture units. And I'll just put a pin in that and come back to it later, and can explain that more when we get into the density. But the minute, okay, then it takes you to minimum yard setbacks. They are requesting a variation of 11 feet, which would be, which would bring them within nine feet of the east, of the property line on the East Herman Street side. And they're requesting a variation of 14 feet, which would be within six feet of the property line on Marshall Street side. So that'll be another variation for tonight's meeting. The side yard setback is they've met that, which is five feet with a total of 15, and they're fine on that. Maximum building height, they're fine, 35 feet. Their proposed height at the highest pitch of a roof is 28. Maximum lot coverage, which is 40%, they're fine on that based on code requirements. For parking, they are to have 1.25 spaces per unit when it's senior housing. That would be 40. So they're asking for a variation of eight, 88 spaces, so that they would only have 32, 32 units, 32 spaces. And out of those 32 spaces, eight of those are gonna be ADA. For, they also, even though they're asking for a variation of those eight spaces, they also want to create five on-street spaces, which the Public Works Director did not have an issue with. They'll have to just contact him and get all the standards for doing that. But he does, you know, did request previously and would like to still see them, there'd be some sort of signage flashing lights or something, just to make it safer for that crossing over from the property to the Friends Care Center. Landscaping, again, they don't have a detailed plan for that yet, and that that will be required in the final plan, site plan review. I'm just skip through some of this. The thing about the PUD is we have to pull from different sections of the code, and we're getting a repeat of sometimes the same information, which I'm sure you noticed. One of the things in 12, in 125403, is that where we're on? Let's see. Yeah. D, modification of minimum requirements. They have to satisfy at least four of the criteria in order to get this modification of minimum requirements. Preserve the best natural features of the site. This was a former location for Wright State University's Family Health Clinic, and it was demolished many, many, many years ago. So all that's really left of that is the remains of a parking lot. However, in this proposal, they have identified a little grove of trees, and they are building around that. They want to try to preserve that grove of trees. So for that reason, that is the only best natural feature of the site. Staff does agree with that. I won't go through it again because I already did. The open space requirement of 15% has, they're more than, they calculated it at 35.5%. So they're fine on that as well. The other one is that they have to commit that at least 10% of all the dwelling units in the PUD are permanently affordable. They've more than met that. 22 of the rental units will be permanently affordable senior dwellings. They're to provide a mix of residential types, such as single-family townhome or multifamily, and they did meet that with the mix of duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes. So out of the eight potential, they needed to, they applied for four modifications, and that was number one, two, three, and four of the eight. And that's of 125403. And staff agrees that they have met those minimum requirements for one, two, three, Now for the density bonus. That more than 20% of the total units within the PUD have to be committed to affordable units, they've met that. They didn't apply for number two, and they didn't apply for three, for number four, number five. They applied for number six, low-impact development, design principles. They will be using low-impact design methods to reduce that storm pond size. They've not determined yet, until they get the engineering calculations and drawings, what methods they're gonna use. But they, it may be a variety of things, from rain gardens to infiltration trenches. They may actually do something underground if they need to, storage tank or something. They also applied under number eight, additional accommodations beyond the required pathways. They met that because of the addition of the pedestrian walkway on the east side of the building, and there'll also be that location for bicycle racks. The minimum of 25% open space. Okay, so the criteria at this time, it has been met. So when I was mentioning earlier, I don't see, I don't think we have to be too concerned about that. I'm sure that they're gonna keep that within the 25%. Like I said, you could basically pull out one whole lot, a 7,500-square-foot lot, and I can't imagine that the pond would be larger than that. And basically, their statement was, at this time, we don't know what the size will be as it will depend on a number of factors. This is for the storm pond, including how much we're able to treat using alternative methods. And they are gonna explore the feasibility and impact of rain barrels, drip line infiltration trenches, detention basins, rain gardens, and a last-resort underground detention tanks. So for the density bonus, they have to have at least three amenities. And staff agrees that number one, number eight, and number nine meet the criteria. If the stormwater pond is not significant in size, it may be determined also in the final plan review that number six can be added to that, because that will also meet the requirements of the low-impact design elements that they would employ to not have that large storm pond.
Density bonus get them up to the 32 units, or does that need to be addressed separately?
That density bonus gets them up to be able to get the 32 units, and then you can, Planning Commission has full reign on deciding that density. It's not like, there's no formula for it, like you can only do 50% of something.
Okay.
Not with the PUD. Because, you know, basically, the PUD, it's almost like you're writing a specific zoning code just for this development. Oh, skipping through this, it's all relating to the parking. One of the things I did want to mention, because it does say in here that, you know, the open space shall neither be perceived nor function simply as an extension of the rear yard of those lots abutting it. And one of the things I did want to mention, that the open space area was originally designed with input from the community. So they've taken that input, and that's why they've put the parking area completely on the west side of the property next to the fire station, with the open space area budding the residential side to the east. So I'm gonna mention that. A lot of this I've already mentioned. Okay, so down to 125405, which was the review process. Staff did hold, those staff did meet with Home Inc. staff in February, so we had a pre-application conference then. They submitted the PUD application on February 22. They do have a parallel plan in there, it's exhibit E. And then I have outlined in here all of the areas where the information for the preliminary development plan is located, like the general location map was on exhibit B. I don't think I need to reiterate all that. You would have seen that in the document. So one of the things, though, that it was required, there was, they had to have a schedule and progression of each phase or stage, and they did break that down into phases, and they did provide an estimated time for construction. And so I can go ahead and just mention, phase one, majority of construction is planned for '24. Phase two, construction likely in '26. Phase three, 2028, and then phase four, to be determined. They'll also be entering into an agreement, but that again is for the final plan. So let me take this down to the review standards. Now, 125406 review standards, they're supposed to just weigh that against the qualifying conditions and those benefits, but that isn't really something that staff answers in the report, so.
After committing the commission review.
Well, they've reviewed the packet, heard your staff report, heard from the applicant.
Yeah.
Then they'll need to make a motion about 125406 and whether they think the plan needs to be strengthened.
Okay. All right. So PUDs are a little bit different in that there's no BZA involved. So that's why any variations under a PUD, such as allowing them to have a six-foot setback instead of a 20-foot setback, that is a Planning Commission decision. It's not, it does not go to BZA. So that's why we need to make sure that's all taken care of tonight. And that takes me down to, staff recommends this approval of the preliminary plan with the following conditions. Infrastructure projected. Infrastructure projected load capacities and stormwater calculations to be provided. We'll get that for the final plan. A recalculation of the open space requirement, which allowed for that density bonus of 25% once you know what the engineering calculations for the stormwater are. The East Herman Street improvements, the five on-street parking spaces, and safety And of course, all infrastructure improvements are at the expense of the developer. And I just wanted to note that the Public Works Director noticed on the site plan that there's two overhead utility lines to be relocated underground. So those engineering relocation costs are at the expense of the developer, but if there's any assistance from, like, the Public Works Director as far as who to go to, how to do it, or whatever, you can contact him on that. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. That's quite a lot. Okay, so then the next thing is, is there somebody from Home Inc. who would like to make a presentation?
Sure.
Sure, okay.
Hi, Emily. I love my... And here is our architect from Cleveland, Krista.
Krista Pisarchik, architectural designer, city planner with City Architecture.
So I think in lieu of a big presentation, since you've already had a pretty robust presentation, we just wanted to take you through some of the slides that we...that are in the packet, are in your packet, some of the conceptual drawings, talk a little bit about some of the features. But as you know, this is...we originally got a 54-unit project approved. The understanding with the Morgan Family Foundation is that we would go in twice for planned...for a tax credit project, or actually go in three times. We went in twice, and it became clear as we were gearing up for the third round that despite our lobbying and best efforts, low-income housing tax credits do not work for Yellow Springs right now on as the way that the points are structured. So rather than spend another $30,000 or $40,000 on a round-three application, we determined that it would be in our best interest to reconceptualize the drawing, I mean, the design. So it still is close to the intended purpose. We did a lot of market research for that first 54-unit design, including focus groups, public outreach meetings, listening sessions, spending one-on-one time...one-on-one time listening in neighbor living rooms, et cetera. For this most recent iteration, we looked at what was achievable through funding sources that we have gotten before and successful projects in Yellow Springs, like the last couple of rental projects that we did, the Glen Cottage's Pocket Neighborhood. So we looked at those same sources, and then we looked at scale, funding, ceiling limits, and that's how we came up with the phased plan and design. And then we'll be acting as solo developers. But for this, we took what we learned from the first...the first iteration of this plan, what people liked, what people didn't like, where the tension points were, and then the trade-offs. And then we did another round of market of just trying to get community input because we think that's essential and really important since residents are the experts of their own experience and know what they want. So we had listening sessions, we did a survey, we also had a community forum, and we spent just, again, a lot of time talking with stakeholders and then changed the design based on their input. So I think there is a lot of community input going into this, and we feel that it's a really strong design that fits in well with the neighborhood, reflects the preferences of the community, and then, most importantly, provides desperately needed affordable housing in Yellow Springs. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Krista.
Okay. So Emily did a very great introduction. Last year, they reached out to our firm, them and their board, and asked us to come in and help with the redesign process. And so we've been working with them, had some...helped with some of those surveys and the community outreach, and really heard what residents were saying. And so we incorporated a lot of that feedback into the design you see here today. You've already extensively gone over the site plan, so I won't reiterate a lot of that. But, you know, know that we are trying to kind of create this housing almost in like a park-like setting, just to try to keep it very comfortable and very in keeping with the neighborhood character and the village itself. You know, the homes are clustered around this open space. That gives a lot of benefit, a lot of walkways. There's pathways so people can go out and take a walk, where they can ride their bike, they can connect to the other nearby pathways and, you know, connect with each other, be neighborly, be friendly with, you know, and connect with one another. Some seating opportunities, some gardens, some shade. You know, and the way the houses are clustered around this space kind of keeps like that kind of eyes-on-the-street aspect and enhances safety and keeping an eye and looking out for one another, which is definitely something you want to see, you know, in a neighborhood with families and a neighborhood with seniors. Those are all very important. The houses that we've designed, we've tried to take cues from the neighborhood. It's a very eclectic mix, so there's a lot to draw inspiration from, just on the nearby streets. But we took the scale way down, brought it to more of that residential kind of single-family home feel, and just some durable materials that'll last, they will look good for a very long time with minimal maintenance, and just kind of cute little houses for people to move into and just continue, you know, the next chapter of their lives here in Yellow Springs.
So this is our opportunity to ask questions? So do anybody...I have some questions, but I'll let other people ask. Okay, so I just...the...I guess the first one is like Yellow Springs residents, is there...how are you going to...are you...is there...are you trying to get Yellow Springs seniors to move into these houses? And are you going to...is there some plan to try and make sure that it's being used by Yellow Springs folks?
That's a great question. I mean, certainly, anyone living there will be living in Yellow Springs and will be a Yellow Springs resident. But to answer your question, we follow affirmative, fair housing outreach and marketing plans. Those are approved by HUD. It's fair housing law. It's part of the civil rights movement. And so one of the...one of the things that we're not allowed to do is say...is give people from Yellow Springs priority placement. They don't get to go to the front of the list. And then we also advertise to underrepresented populations through, like I said, an approved affirmative marketing and outreach plan. And then what we'll do is have a random number generator, blind lottery to ensure fairness. That being said, I think it is reasonable and not exaggerating to anticipate that most of the residents will already be living here, or will be coming back, or will be...have some strong tie to the community. That's what we've seen in our projects. And I think especially for the senior population, having...being able to put down roots in the community where they live, where they already have a social network, is most important. So I...that is the trend that we see. And then we also have interest lists right now of over 200 households, and more than half of those are folks who already live in Yellow Springs.
Okay, thank you. I just...I'm not against having people from outside move into Yellow Springs. It's just, you know, this question about having, you know, turnover of houses, you know, to, you know, have houses that, you know, families can afford.
Yeah, and I think just to directly address that point, which is a really good question, this will undoubtedly create more housing choice and housing movement within Yellow Springs. I don't think we can say with certainty that every single unit will be occupied by someone selling a large, single-family home, though we do anticipate that there will be some freeing up of larger homes in Yellow Springs.
Okay. And then the townhomes, you don't have a date on the plan for the townhomes, but so those are...those are things that you're going to sell. Those are...these are not like low-income. This is something you're going to build and sell.
Well, they will still be benefiting residents of low to moderate income through our Affordable For Sale program, and they'll still be part of the Community Land Trust. We've already developed 26 of that type of house around the village.
Okay. Okay. And then I guess just a question, some of these are two-story units. It just...I was just wondering, seems like maybe older folks wouldn't want two-story units.
Great question. So, yeah, I would say that's the biggest trade-off that we faced when we put it to the community and really engaged seniors in Yellow Springs in particular to answer that question. So with the 54-unit project, that was three to four stories, depending on the iteration, there was an elevator.
Right.
In this project, we cannot include elevators. It's cost prohibitive and not possible. So the trade-off was between serving more seniors or more residents by including some second-floor units or just having it all be on one floor and serving a fewer number. So our original design was 50/50, 50% up, 50% down. After getting a lot of public input, we modified it. So there are only six upstairs units in...out of the 32. And then the...
So the triplex ones where it's a two-story thing, it's actually the two of the units are on the first floor...
Yes.
...and one is on the second floor.
Yes, and then the entrances, the stairs up to those units will be covered, and they'll be wide enough to accommodate a chairlift in the future if there is some sort of accident or it becomes an emergency. But after really getting a lot of public input, I think we feel confident that that reflects the wishes of the community. And then I know we talked a lot about accessibility features beyond just stairs or no stairs, and we've integrated aspects of universal design and accessibility into all of the units, all 32 of the units.
Okay.
So if you have any specific questions about that, Krista can talk more about it.
Well, I would like to see the layout, but I didn't see that in the packet, but it's just for my own curiosity. It really has nothing to do with, you know, this preliminary plan. So just one last thing. So now Home Inc. is, you know, so they're going to be the, I guess, essentially the landlord, and then they're the landlord for other things all around town. And then how is it set up? Like, you know, how do, you know, how do we know that Home Inc. is going to be around in 100 years? Because these buildings could be. So there...you're going to...you have an ongoing, you know, you have an ongoing responsibility.
Yes, as a Community Land Trust, we are dedicated to the audacity of perpetuity, as they say, in both conservation and Community Land Trusts. But, yeah, I mean, in addition to, you know, just solid financial management and multi-year budgets, of course, like every responsible nonprofit, we do have options for the worst options in terms of making sure that units continue their charitable purpose. But our intention is certainly to stick around returning 25 this year. So hopefully, at least another 25, and then another 25, and then another 25. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, okay. Okay, other questions? Okay, so then now we're...
I have a couple.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, one builds off of Steve's original line of questioning about, actually, the various...about Home Inc. property, about residents moving...existing residents or people who previously or have family connections here versus people from elsewhere that are moving. And I'm just along the lines of what you were saying. So the existing portfolio of Home Inc. projects, both the rentals and the homeownership ones, really, really roughly, what percentage of those have been...have become occupied by people that either were already living in Yellow Springs or previously or had family connections? Do you have a rough number?
I don't have an exact number for you because that's...because we'd also have to look at resales and turnovers, but definitely more than half are...
Okay.
...either already living here or have a very strong tie to Yellow Springs. And with our, I think, the last couple of rentals, it was maybe at le...definitely at least 50% of the units were occupied by folks already living here. And then I think all the other ones were people who were returning home, so...
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I personally know of one that was able to move back because of the work y'all do here, so I love that.
Yeah.
That they're able to return.
So I had one other item. It's not exactly a question, but as I look through this carefully also, once again with an eye towards active transport and what...in...to have them all tabbed, in half a dozen locations, there's mentions of bike racks, but in none of the drawings is anything shown. And I'm assuming that's just because preliminary drawings, they're not in yet, and assuming that they'll show up in final drawing. And I also wanted to encourage you also, whenever that happens, to also use a particular style of bike rack that are, you know, inverted U seems to be the way to go as opposed to some of the other choices. And I suspect there's other people in your organization that'll promote that, too.
Yes, that is our intention. We have not identified the exact locations of the racks yet, which is why they aren't on the plans.
Okay.
But it is our intent to provide a number of them at strategic locations so that we make sure they're getting the most optimal use.
Yeah.
And I hear you on the inverted U style.
Yeah.
You know, that is our preferred style as well when we spec them, just knowing that, you know, having that dual point of safety of locking.
Right.
That's definitely the preferred method, so we'll do that.
Right, okay. Okay, good. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, so then we are gonna...we're done asking questions, and then we're going to open a public hearing. Okay, so anybody would like to come and speak, you know, state your name? We're looking for two minutes.
My name's Mitzi Miller, and I'd like to thank Home Inc. for having the opportunity that we opened discussion up with community members and really listening to community members. I have a couple concerns. Number one, I'm glad we have...you're considering ADA parking issues on your site. I...I'm a little confused. You're...you're requesting one parking spot per home? Is that my understanding? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Do you really think then five parking spots on the street are going to be enough to accommodate additional parking if families have more than one vehicle and guests coming in? The other question I would have and concern would be the retention area, and I don't know where that's at on the site. I can't really tell. But with the retention pond on Xenia Avenue, I think there is some danger for pedestrians and bikers. I've actually seen bicyclists go down that retention area and up using it as an area for tricks, and that it's so close to, I think, one particular home there in its backyard, that those are considerations for safety. And if you have a retention pond, that you also consider some kind of safety measure around it. Thank you.
Thank you. So do we...do we want to just go through this and then ask and...okay, and get them answered all at the end? Okay, anybody else? Would anybody else like to speak?
I would. Thank you. I'm Laura Curlis. I live at 1118 Livermore Street, and I have the same concern about this development that I had with the last one. My biggest concern is parking and pushing the parking out onto Herman Street or any of the side streets. And maybe Denise knows, but just from living there, the width of Herman Street might require...if you push parking out onto the street, might require traffic to stop, like it may reduce it to one length.
Yeah, that's going to have to be looked at, but I think...
I think it will.
The width is greater than what the pavement is, so there is off...there's an off area right away. So there is off, there's an off area right away.
That would be great, although I think the ditches are pretty deep in that area.
That, oh, yeah, that's all engineering, right?
But I, I mean, you know, old, old people have guests and workers come there, too. So you need to have more than one parking space per unit. And they often, of course, the people who live there will often have more than one vehicle. So you're realistically going to be pushing a lot more parking out onto the street than five spaces, is my guess. Secondly, you know, I kind of feel like I want truth in open space calculating. And what I mean by that is, if you actually made them put the required parking on this, on the site, and then you didn't give them this setback allowance variation, would they actually have 35% open space? Because you're not allowed to count those areas, right? So I've got a feeling it's going to greatly reduce it if you actually made them meet the requirements of a normal PUD without giving them a variance.
Well, I mean, that's the idea of a PUD, right?
Oh, I know, oh, I know, but-
It has that flexibility, so it'll be the planning commission's decision.
Well, yeah, exactly.
It's their, it's their choice, yeah.
Okay. And I guess my last request, which I always make, is please, 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 90-degree cutoff lighting and that, and no lights on that crosswalk, please. I mean, people live there. We don't need this in our faces all night. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please.
I was afraid I'd start crying. I just have such a love for Home Inc. and all the work they've done for the last 25 years. And to have a village this size and to have this active affordable housing organization that will take a proposal of an apartment building and, for whatever reason, turn it into this, what I think is a beautiful setup with all kinds of things that they've thought of. So I just am a big fan. I'm currently a user or a resident of a Home Inc. home, so I'm very grateful for all the work that goes into everything they do, and I think it's well worth supporting.
Really quickly, can you state your name and your affiliation with the village?
Patty Dallas, lifelong villager. And anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Matthew Kirk, 1745 Southview Drive, Village resident. Had really planned to say much of anything on this, but, you know, hearing some of the comments from people and just trying to provide some, maybe some perspective. You know, the reality is, as Home Inc. alluded to, it's very hard to get any kind of affordable development off the ground in Yellow Springs. Because we simply are not great candidates for the existing tax credit programs and things like that that allow you to get to that price point. So what that means is, projects like this, it's really necessary to utilize the space as efficiently as possible, you know, because that's how you are able to get some of those prices down, is that you have two units instead of one, or you have three instead of two. And so, you know, like everything, you know, there are opposing values, right? And so it means we have to trade, you know, come to some kind of reasonable trade-offs. And at the end of the day, if we say we want affordable housing in the village, that means we're going to have to make some trade-offs. That means there may only be one parking space. Somebody, when they have family over, they may park in front of your house. That happens in most neighborhoods, too. You know, come to most neighborhoods on a Thanksgiving, and there's all kinds of people parked on the street. So I would imagine that kind of thing is going to evolve just like it would any other neighborhood. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, Chris Bonjorno. I am a resident of 107 Marshall Street, so I think I'm the most proximate neighbor to the project in the room tonight. I'm also the board president of Home Inc. I can just attest to the amount of time staff and consultants have put in, and the board has put into communicating with surrounding neighbors with a focus on the most immediate neighbors and refining the design to be something that we can actually build and that is responsive to what they would like to see adjacent to their properties. So I think that the, the scale of the community that we're looking to build, the architecture is very much an improvement over what we were looking to do a few years ago from the perspective of several nearby neighbors. And I think what we have here is something very feasible that we can do in phases that works very well in the Home Inc. model. I'll agree with what Matt said about the trade-offs. I think what we're trying to do here is to build something that's pedestrian-oriented, that is more focused on creating the, the need for the end user than on accommodating all the potential parking spaces that might someday be used. But we can also point to some of our recent projects and the actual parking demand that we see on those properties, as well as other similarly scaled, affordable and senior-focused housing projects throughout the community, and really give evidence to the less, the lesser need, the lower demand for parking. I will just say, too, we'll commit to working with the village and making sure that crosswalk is safe. I do agree that flashing beacons are not appropriate in that location, but there are other measures we can do to make sure it's safe. And then the utility cost for the infrastructure piece, that's something that we'll have to continue to explore, just the same as we will continue to explore the stormwater infrastructure. But I hesitate to say we can 100% commit to paying for all the infrastructure needs that we don't know about yet. It's just something that we'll need to work out, and we'll work with you to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sure, now's your chance.
Hello, my name's Matt Raska, and I live here in Yellow Springs. And I would just like to state that it's always really frustrating to hear people taking housing security for advantage, granted. And I hope everyone that has spoken against this plan has secure housing for the rest of their lives. As someone who has held to help his unhoused elderly in-laws find a place to stay, I'm very happy to see Home Inc. provide a place for families to grow and elders to downsize. My family is a family that has benefited from a community elder choosing to downsize and selling their house to us at a price that we can afford. Shout out to Sue Parker. If we are wanting to be a resilient and equitable community, we need to support thoughtful plans like this. This is an OBR, this is an organization, and a plan born and raised in Yellow Springs. My whole family hopes Planning Commission will support this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, well, with that, we're going to close the public hearing. And then, so I guess we'd like to go back to, Emily, if you could answer some of the questions. Do you want to comment on, like, solicitor's department? Is one spot enough?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. I think we're just gonna, I'll talk, and then I'll look at you when, okay. So first, Mitzi, thank you for speaking and for the passion you bring to our community. I think in terms of the parking in the five units on the street plus the 32 units on site, which is 37 units altogether, or wait, no. That's, yeah, 37 units altogether. So it's less than the 1.25, but based on what we have seen with the other affordable housing rentals that we've created, one-to-one is more than sufficient. And we've also had people in the community ask for less than one-to-one parking. So this was our attempt to get a balance. But I think in the last two rental communities that we've built, maybe 50% have cars. So we really feel that this is going to be sufficient. But I will hand it over to the expert to weigh in as well on that.
I mean, I think Emily said everything. I probably would have on the, on the same thing. I mean, we've heard both sides of it, you know, whether there was a desire for more or for less parking. You know, my understanding is that not every resident has a car or wants a car, and especially looking at the population, aging seniors, as time goes on, maybe they will have less need to drive, or they'll have other people helping them, so they will also not need those spaces, so. And then just, you know, being cognizant of our plans for this to be more senior-focused, we have provided more than the required minimum for, like, ADA spaces, for instance, just to make sure that, you know, there's van spaces and stuff available for every resident that needs them.
Okay, thank you.
And if you want, I can, I wrote down the comments, and I can go through, or we can just respond to the ones you want us to.
Well, I just, I wrote them down, so the, the next one was about the pond safety. And is this, are we talking about a retention or a detention pond?
This is about storm, stormwater-
Yeah.
-being stored on site. And I think it was referencing the Glenn Cottage's Pocket Neighborhood, which has a pretty steep detention pond. I do not anticipate this being a steep detention pond, but obviously we'll ensure that safety is, is considered, and I appreciate that suggestion, Mitzi. But I don't know if there's anything that you want to add about the safety?
No, I mean, obviously, safety is a priority. So we will definitely make sure that, you know, whatever we're proposing is indeed safe for the people who are living and visiting here. You know, but that's also part of why we're exploring multiple methods for stormwater management, just so that we can cut down on the size of that, and therefore, maybe it won't have to be as deep. It'll be less of an attraction for some of the activity that is being observed, so.
And then the 90-degree cutoff lighting, was that, was that part of your plan?
We have not gotten into the specifics of light fixtures, but we're always very dark sky-aware, so we will make sure that, you know, we're trying to shield the light, you know, from the sky for nocturnal animals, kind of, you know, cutoff so that it kind of remains on the property and those sorts of things are, are best practices.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I will say, too, just about the, I think the retention pond that Mitzi was talking about at Glenn Cottage's, we have started doing plantings around the perimeter, and that's something that we'll, we'll continue to do as, to do as the neighborhood matures. Just so you know, we are, we are listening, so.
So has anybody, I'm sorry, has anybody explored biofiltration swales?
We'll certainly look into it. We have not made a determination one way or the other on any of the methods yet.
Writing it down, thank you.
Okay. Is that, did you have other things on the, other questions?
Yeah, I guess I, I was just going to say that I guess I appreciated Patty's comment as well as Matt Raska's talking about the importance of just considering housing security. Because even, I mean, I think homelessness and housing insecurity often looks different in, in small rural places. And so a lot of times, it's invisible, but it might be somebody who's couch surfing for several years, which we have certainly encountered, and we all probably know somebody who's in that situation. And then in terms of trade-offs for affordability, land and density, we do believe that building denser housing is, is important. It doesn't necessarily lead automatically to affordability. We're still fundraising a lot of money from outside sources to make this project work. But of course, it, denser development does create more supply, and that is, that is helpful. And there are some, some scaling economies of scale that go into that. And then what Chris Bonjorno said about infrastructure, I think is, is important to flag, because I saw that the staff was approving condition, as a condition of approval, that Yellow Springs Home Inc. would pay for the 2019 sewer relining that was done adjacent to the site, as well as any infrastructure, as well as the utility poll. And I just, it would be, I think it would give us more comfort if we could make that part of, of the discussion around the final approval, because we just don't have the calculations yet and don't understand what, that's, that's a pretty broad commitment and so, and to, to hold us to until we have additional information, particularly just since there's no easement on the utility line right now. And then we have agreed verbally, and we will obviously integrate this into the project budget, the 2019 sewer relining. We will make every attempt to honor that commitment, as well as other infrastructure costs. It's just so early that before there is the appropriate level of civil engineering, and we have more information, have a chance to really sit down with Johnny and go over the numbers, we just feel like it's a little bit premature to make that a condition of approval. And then I guess the, the only other thing I would say is that the, when we agreed to pay for the sewer relining, it was tied to the village granting tap fee waivers as part of the 54-unit project. And so we just want to revisit that and have that all taken into consideration as well. That would be our request.
Okay. Okay, so, all right, well, thank you for your, your input. So now we need to, we need to figure out, so, so this, I am a little bit unclear about how this works, because since it's already a PUD, we're not, we're not addressing the question of whether they-
Yeah.
-become a PUD. We are looking at the preliminary plan review for the whole plan, is my, what my understanding is that we're looking at. And so then we need to see whether they, need to come to some kind of an agreement about whether they meet the criteria that they are supposed to. And I think that that is, these are the things on the review standards, so it's on page 20. And I don't know in how much detail, I know that there's already some, some things that have been identified that need to, you know, in the, the staff recommendation, some, some conditions for this approval. But I think the first thing is that we want to make sure that we go the 125406 review standards, that we, whether we go one by, one by one, or how we want to do this, or whether we think that they comply with that.
I don't think that we have to do them one by one, is that?
That's, that's fine. Yeah, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't think I want to be here all night, either.
Right. And then the recommend, I think that we consider the recommendations of staff.
Okay. Yeah?
What I heard is that it worked for staff, is that? Oh, oh. No, what I, what I heard, what I heard is that, what I heard is that it worked, it worked for, for staff, the recommend.
Yeah, so 125402, there were eight qualifying conditions, and-
They met.
They, they, they had to meet five of them, three of them, and they-
And they met five.
They met five, and staff agrees.
Do we need to do a motion on that?
Well-
125402, or is that the-
Yeah.
-first part of this?
Well, let's just, let me recap it, and then we'll go back for those motions.
Okay.
Then 125406 had qualifying condition, well, that was just the conditions that staff added onto that. Then 1250, I got to say this, 125403, section 125403, has two areas. One, they needed to have, they needed to meet four modifications, and staff agreed that they met one, two, three, and four. And then 125403E, they needed three amenities, and staff agreed that one, eight, and nine meet those requirements. Now, goes that to-
Okay.
Do we need three motions? One for 125403?
No, we just need one for 125402 and 125406. And to put your mind at ease on that, 125406 encompasses that the PUD meets all the standards, conditions, and requirements.
Perfect. Okay, cool. Great.
So do, do we, do we have other things, do we have other things that you want, you have concerns about?
I don't.
Okay. So then the motion, so it's two motions that we need to have here. One is the one that addresses 125402, which is, so this is, this is a move to concur with the findings of the Planning and Zoning Administration that five of the three qualifying conditions have been met as follows: a complementary mix of land uses or housing types, extensive open space and recreational amenities, connectivity of open space with new or existing adjacent greenway or trail corridors, preservation of small-town appeal, and coordinated development of mul, of multiple small parcels. That would be the motion. Can that?
Second.
Okay. So is that sufficient?
It absolutely is. I left, I left word out there. So five of the three required qualifying conditions have been met, yes, because they're only three required.
Five of the three required, okay.
But I, I feel like you meant that when you said-
I did, I meant required, okay.
All right, got it.
All right, so then we need a roll call?
A call roll, absolutely. Brown?
Yes.
Osterholm?
Yes.
Zaremski?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And then the, the second motion, so I, are, are we including the density in the second motion, or we are not?
Would it be helpful for, I mean, I can go through all of the modifications and conditions, because we have added some, there were some that staff had, had identified, you had identified some that staff had not.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so, yes, please.
All right, so, so you would, you would move approval on the grounds that preliminary plan meets the standards, standards of 125406, subject to the following conditions and modifications. And then what I've got is, staff had added approval modification to minimum parking requirements from 40 to 32, uh, that infrastructure projected load capacities and stormwater calculations will be provided for final plan, plan review, that approval of recalculation of the open space requirement, which allows for a density bonus of 25% if the property is devoted to open space, um, and that will require engineering calculations for stormwater first. Require East Herman Street improvements, five on-street parking spaces, and safety, it says safety lights, we can say is safety measures.
Yes.
At the crosswalk to FCC at the expense of the developer.
Yep.
All infrastructure improvements are at the expense of the developer and will be determined following submission of final engineering plan. So, I mean, that does, this does contemplate, all infrastructure improvements will be at the expense of the developer. That recommendation comes from Planning Commission, it can get modified by council.
All right.
Then I have added, um, variation to front yard setbacks of 11 feet on East Herman and 14 feet on, on Marshall, which gives you a total of nine feet setback on East Herman and a six-foot setback on Marshall. That's what I got.
And then we don't have to do anything about the density?
Well.
Do you want to put it in there just to make sure that everybody's clear that we're saying that the density of 32 units on 1.8 acres is okay?
Well, that sort of circles back to an issue that was brought up. It depends on whether or not you are concurring with the staff recommendation that there is sufficient parking in that first approved modification, the minimum parking requirements. If you're agreeing with that, okay, if you're saying, gee, you know, that doesn't work for me, I want all the parking, then that would have to be reconsidered, so you may want to discuss that modification.
Yes, the way we feel about parking.
Not fine with what staff has had with it.
Right, the recommendations of staff is fine.
Yeah.
All right, so we're?
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, we're all agreement on the parking is okay.
So then, the open spa-, space calculation pieces is good, right? Okay, so, yep.
Do we need, so then this, this density of the 18 units, or 32 units on 1.8 acres, on that page 15, it said that it needed a, um, whatever it said on page 15. It said, um, uh, need a variation. So the, the, um, the density yard setbacks and parking.
We got, we've got, are you seeing?
Yeah, but they, but that's been included, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's 40 to 30, the same 40 to 32, yeah.
Yep.
Front yard setbacks, yep. Density, yes.
So we, we need to have something that says, you know, and the, the density of 32 units?
Correct?
Yep. It won't hurt anything, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right, do we need to go over that again? We, we're, so, uh, parking spaces, uh, the, um, the stormwater calculations, the recalculation of the open space, the Herman Street improvements for the parking, the infrastructure improvements at the expense of the developer, the front yard setbacks, and then the density allowing 32 units on 1.8. And those are, so in compliance with 125406. Okay, that's our motion.
Okay.
Is that, okay, so we want to second?
I was tagging that.
Okay.
Nice job. Scott, all right, Zaremski.
Uh, yes.
Osterholm.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, the preliminary plan for this has been approved, okay, all right.
Not the split hairs, but recommend, it's been recommended.
Recommended for approval, right, so turn this back to Susan.
Good fun.
Good job.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is to look at the text amendments. And you had an initial statement about text amendments, do you want us to? Or do we just jump down to amend 12?
Where are they?
I think it's going to 27.
The code.
Oh, you mean, you owe to.
Okay, yeah, so you're saying there was a, something that I said at the front of that, or what?
Yeah, you have, you have listed text amendments.
As applying for zoning to support council's goal for increased.
Do you need us to do something with that, or no?
No, I mean, we're just gonna take each one separate, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, we have then a few text amendments, and we'll start with 1242 annexation. And this is change zoning density for any land annexation from RA low-density residential to RB moderate-density residential. Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, well, at the last meeting, we discussed the fact that, um, all, all land comes in at the lowest density and, um, rather than having a second step in having to go back and, and rezone it to RB in order to have the mix of housing, we could just change the annexation to have everything come in as RB. So at least, and a developer would have the different options for, um, however they want to, uh, plan their site.
Now, what RB does not allow, if I, if I'm correct, is it doesn't allow multifamily.
It does.
It does.
Mm-hmm.
Conditional, or just, I thought it was conditional.
It may be conditional, but it does allow, yeah.
Okay, so, conditional. That was my, I guess, a question that I had about that. I mean, I thoroughly support, um, either making it RB or RC. And I guess I, I, the reason that I, and I wanted to see what your opinion, RC would allow multifamily without it, would be permitted, not conditional. And my concern is, we are wanting more affordable housing. We are more likely to have affordable housing through apartments, duplexes, that type of thing. And I think that a developer is more likely to be open to doing it in Yellow Springs when they don't have to go through a process that's conditional. And so that's why, because, so with RC, it would be permitted, and so, what are, any thoughts?
Staff doesn't agree, but.
Staff doesn't agree, okay.
That's my opinion, yeah, I mean, I don't understand what the big problem is with conditional, because it's, it's a meeting, it's a hearing, it gives people, I mean, this town has always been a very activist town, it's a very engaged community, and we are basically telling the neighbors of whatever's gonna go in there that they don't even have a right to at least have an opinion about it. It doesn't mean that that's gonna change anything, I mean, sometimes it does. I mean, sometimes it modify, and people modify their plans, but I, I, I'm, I just don't quite understand it. It literally is not that big of a hoop to go through.
But, right now, we're talking about annexed land, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so there's nothing there for any.
No, there's nothing there, huh?
Currently.
So it's, so the neighbors would, there would be neighbors, but there aren't gonna be neighbors right there.
Yeah.
So in some ways.
I, I think, you know, so.
We're only talking about, yeah, the RB zoning, so, yeah.
So, the, um, you know, the, the Planning Commission is not here, I mean, we're not really making, you know, anything, making up anything new, we're seeing whether something follows the requirements. I mean, the, this whole process is, here are the requirements in our codes, and does this question meet those requirements? So it isn't, it's a, it's not a very subjective thing, this is clearly just, does it meet the requirements? So that's why I don't think that having things being conditional is really a big issue. We're not, we're not like, you know, we're not saying, oh, I don't like this, so I'm not gonna do it. It's like, well, does it meet the requirements, and if it does meet the requirements, then we've been approving it. I mean, we've gone through so many of these things where it's conditional, and, you know, uh, I can't, I can think of only one thing where things are sort of murky, and then they didn't end up, it was an accessory dwelling and they didn't end up doing it, so it just, uh, I think for the most part, when people have asked them to meet the requirements, we said, we approved it.
Well, I see this is different than a accessory dwelling unit.
Okay.
Which is conditional. This is, would be like Ober.
Yeah.
Coming in, and they had to get, um, conditional use, and ended up not getting anything. Uh, so a developer coming.
But we gave, we approved the.
We did, but, but they ended up not getting it, because it, we may pass it, but then it becomes a political issue when it goes to council, and so it didn't pass.
Yeah, I don't know where we're, yeah, we're not, we're not even, huh? No, no, typically, conditional uses do not go onto council, that, that, that was a, a major subdivision, that's different.
And we're assuming though, that if, if a lot, if land is being annexed, we can assume, but some of it could be a major development.
Right.
Major subdivision.
Sure, sure.
But, but we're still talking about annexation.
Yes.
The Ober, that, that was not land being annexed.
No.
It would already, at that point, was part of the village, we're, we're just talking about annexation now.
That was the PUD.
And that's, yeah, and that's important to keep in mind, what we're talking about here. That, uh, you know, that a new parcel of land being incorporated in.
Yes.
What's the starting point for it?
Right, 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 right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Conditional gives, um, the village an opportunity to look at what they're doing, what, what's, what's the underlying infrastructure, um, what's the plan? I, I just don't, I, I've been in this position for eight years, and we've never denied a conditional use application. It's not, I think people are thinking it's much more than it is.
And have we had annexation, where large parcels were annexed and, and that?
Not during my eight years, but I mean, except for the 52, that, we brought in the land over at Ober, that, that property over there that was owned by Ober, we brought that into the village. But that was done through council, it wasn't even me involved in it.
It does, you know, the conditional use means that we're gonna have a hearing, and it lets the neighbors have their input, which I think is, you know, if something was gonna happen in the village, I mean, the whole point of having this process with hearings is to get input, so it, you know, wouldn't you want to be able to have a comment on what happens next door? Even if it, you can't change it?
You know, I'm, I'm looking at it as how to increase the affordable housing.
Yeah.
And so I see that it's easier if you're annexing it so that you don't have to get, go for that conditional.
No, and staff totally agrees with, with the idea that if you use RB, you come in as RB, then that gives any developer an opportunity right off the bat to be able to look at all the various options that they may have, they could do duplexes, they could do multifamily. It wouldn't just be straight, single-family zoning, which has been to people on RA, so.
Yeah, I'd certainly prefer it being RB.
Yeah.
But I would rather have it RC.
But I, I keep coming back to, we're specifically talking about annexation.
Yes.
And so I'm trying to think what the process is, let's say there's just a block of land adjacent to the village on one side or the other, okay? And, and by some mechanism, there's, there's an interest in money available to annex it, okay? Right now, right now, what's the, right now, what's the process in terms of, is there a public hearing on that or anything?
On the annexation itself?
On the annexation?
Yes, it's a pretty extensive process, there's several steps in front of council.
Okay, okay.
It's a council process.
It's a council process, it's not a planning commission process. And then the, the code, the land comes in, when land is annexed into a village or a city, then it comes in under the, the zoning of, well, there's nuances at first that relate to how it's currently zoned, by, either by township or county. And then once it's annexed in, it comes in to whatever our zoning code says, this land, once newly annexed land shall be zoned to this, and council would pass, upon an annexation, council would pass a resolution that, um, a flurry of resolutions, one of which would establish the zoning for the property. And the only, um, you know, and like what Denise is saying, of course, is if we change this language in 124204, instead of it being automatically zoned RA, that it's automatically zoned RB, multifamily is open to that land, but it would have to come in front of this board first. And if it was RC and was not conditional use, then I think the biggest concern, of course, would be the unknowns, right? We have no idea what land we're talking about, where it could be, and what infrastructure could be available.
Oh, they would still, okay, you might annex land, you might annex land, but, but, but at that point, there's no discussion of infrastructure, whether water and sewer and.
Yeah, council takes, take, council takes the step of passing what's known as a state miss services resolution, which establishes what services the village would offer to that land.
Uh, okay.
But, you know, offering.
And we already have a, a, an annexation policy to only annex land that's in our urban service boundary, where we can reach.
Well, it's another consideration, yeah, right, right.
Yeah, so there's.
Utilities to a large plot of land that might have a house on it is very different then, of course.
So what I'm thinking, in terms of, let's say, you're gonna annex property, okay? And, um, the, the, the whole thought of, of neighbors having comment, considering where it would be annexed, the location, you might have two neighbors, you know?
And, and that's like another step depending on, this is, this, for this purpose, is just the annexation process. Like, for example, Glen Helen, when they, we, the village annexed Glen Helen in, in 2018, came in as RA, and I hadn't pointed out to, to the executive director, you know, that's still RA. He thought it was conservation, no, so RA, you're gonna have to initiate a rezoning. RB, I mean, it's just how, it just always came in at the lowest density with the idea that then you have time to figure out what are you wanting to put on there, what would you allow to put on there? But if we're already saying as a community that we want more housing and more different types of housing, which has been very clearly outlined in the 2010 and 2020 comp plans, then RB makes sense, um, because it allows for all those different types of housing and doesn't exclude any type.
Any other questions, any other comments?
So it's permit, but it's with, it's conditional, or is it, it's not exclusively permitted, like permitted use?
In RB, multifamily is a conditional.
It's conditional, okay. So I guess I want to say that I feel like, you know, this is kind of a, it's kind of a touchy issue. But, you know, it's, it's almost as if we think that we're gonna get inundated with people that are, that, that want to come and make affordable housing in Yellow Springs and put apartments everywhere, and we're talking about, like, maybe in the future we'll have a quad somewhere, or an, an eight-plex somewhere. So, and I understand the piece about the public hearing, of course.
Especially for staff, I mean, if you're thinking about staff, because who's gonna bear the brunt of all the people that are gonna be upset without the public process? I mean, it, it, it is, I mean.
Yeah.
I, especially like when I think, like, we're getting off track, but ADUs, for example, I always have people calling me wanting to know, what the heck is that? Where is it, you know, in my backyard, boo, and you know, once they see the plan, now, a lot of those people never even send in the letter, because they're satisfied with what they've seen in the plan that's not gonna affect them, or they come to the meeting and they have an issue, and maybe the developer's willing to compensate some things, or maybe not, but at the end of the day, the idea of, the, the fact that they might want privacy is not something that we can deny that ADU for.
Yeah.
Someone else's right to privacy.
Okay, Carmen, did you have anything else?
No.
Scott, did you have anything?
I'm not sure I want to lose a public process, because from what I've been hearing from both sides, I mean, it's really not that big of a hassle for someone to come down here and, and speak before us and use, I've, like, I've never seen anyone get denied. And I also see the other side a little bit too, but. see the other side a little bit too, but you kind of touched on a little bit, but I'm going to take it a little bit further is, any land that's going to come available and it's going to go up to a developer, I'm going to tell you right now, they're going to be looking at the bottom dollar sign is what they're going to be looking at. They're not going to be looking at affordable housing for us. They may give us some lip service. Their idea of affordable housing is going to be a $200,000 house. You know, we'll say that's great to some people, others will be like, that's not great. But what I would like to see, and I think we already have that, you know, if we do, get some work done with these ADUs, is when houses are built, or these older houses, people want to remodel that, kind of like what we've done with the, the Airbnbs. The, the model that we've used and hopefully we'll still be able to keep local control on that, is where these elderly residents here in Yellow Springs are opening up their doors and they're able to stay in their houses because they're able to use their place as Airbnb. I like that design. I think that works for us. I think I see the same kind of comparison, comparison with the ADU in that kind of aspect. But, because I do like to respect people's privacy, even though we can't judge on that, I get that. But one thing a lot of people like to do, especially in this town, is they want to be heard. And I don't want to deny them that.
Okay, I think we're at the point for a public hearing. Okay, we're going to open it up to a public hearing. Remember, two minutes, give your name. So anybody who wants to speak?
And this is specifically for the text amendment regarding RA to RB?
Yes.
Yeah, Laura Curless, resident of Village Yellow Springs. A procedural point in your minutes of your last meeting, nobody made a motion to bring this particular amendment to this meeting. You did all the other ones. Maybe council can read the minutes, but nobody made the motion to actually bring this text amendment to this meeting. Susan mentioned it, but there was no motion. Okay, that's the point. But I'm glad Hostway's here because in my experience in village government, city government, you want, when you annex land, you want it to come in at the lowest density. As a matter of fact, a lot of cities, when you bring it in, you bring it in at the farm, at the agricultural zoning. Why? Because it gives him power. It gives the village power to negotiate with developers. You're giving your power away if you do bring it in at lower densities. And you want PUDs, right? I mean, we kind of favor that. So don't give away your power. That's the only thing I have to say about this particular amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mitzi Miller, 428 West Limestone Street. As a homeowner and resident of Yellow Springs, I appreciate being heard. You might not like what I say or other people say, but I think everybody deserves an opportunity to speak and share their input on what's going on in the village. And I would recommend that you leave it conditional so that people have a voice. And, and you're right, people want to speak up and they might not come to the mic, they might call Denise and share their concerns, but free speech is important and being able to speak up and share your input's important.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Matthew Kirk, 1745 Southview Drive. I think it's important in this conversation that we zoom out and think about why Matt and Alex wrote all these zines and have been making this case to you. It's because we have a decades-long problem of, we don't have, Denise has mentioned many times that we don't deny stuff, that's because we don't get the applications. Can't deny things you don't get. Nobody's trying to build a duplex here or a fourplex or an apartment building. Doesn't happen. And people have talked many times here, they want to have a say. But if I'm a developer looking at that, I'm going, red light, red light. I don't want you to be able to come in and undermine my project and make it into a political situation, which we know in this community, in all likelihoods, what's going to happen. So if we choose to go the route of conditional, in a lot of ways, what we're saying is, we're really just paying lip service to this issue. But we always have the opportunity, to Carmen's point, if all of a sudden we're inundated, people popping off apartments all over the place, and we can come back and say, wow, maybe we went too far and we should go from permitted back to conditional. But the big thing that we are trying to do here is to light some kind of fire so that we actually start getting some kind of development projects that are of a greater intensity than just a single-family home. And we're not going to do that as long as we keep the walls up. As much as we may not like it, we've got a reputation out in the streets and it's not a good one. You know, this is a place, you come for your project to die. In fact, the last time we had a project come, Hostway just had somebody come out here on Dayton Road, he said, hey, guys, maybe it'd be a great idea to do a PUD here. And they're like, whoa, no thanks, right? It's like the Drake beam. So, all right, that's all I've got to say. Thanks, have a great night.
Thank you. Next?
I'm just saying, quick thing. You all know I'm largely in favor of all of this.
And, and tell us your name.
I'm Alex Melamed, on Walnut Street, currently quite the construction site. I would just make a very narrow point about the fiscal situation that you accept when you invite low density by default. So when a developer gives you gifts to the village, the street, then you accept all of the maintenance costs for that in perpetuity. And if you have houses with large frontages, they're, the tax revenue you're going to get from them is not going to cover the expenses over time. So that's, it's just, it's well beyond our time, my, my time even, but 20, 30 years when these maintenance cycles come up. It is, it is a burden that we're putting on the next generation if we allow sort of subsidized infrastructure for houses that don't cover it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next, Hostway?
Thank you, Susan. How, since my name was brought up and really good points made, I would like to respond to some of them. Laura Curless is right. The, the PUD process or upzoning annexed property as they come in, it comes in, it's a great development tool. It allows us to negotiate and come up with housing concepts that we would have otherwise not have a seat at the table to be able to influence. An example, when the property on the south side of town was being looked at and upzoned, we were able to agree to a valued engineered product, a home that could come at a certain price point. And that was possible because we could engage in a PUD process and be able to ask for these things. And we got it. And we got it a little bit more than that. So to that point, Laura Curless is right. In, in many communities, upzoning is a development tool. But Matthew Kirk is also right. We had another developer come right behind that and we said, hey, let's work out on a PUD and let's take advantage of the zoning code that already exists or something better. You could do duplexes on this property. They said, no. We want single-family housing because we know we, the law will give us that. So it's a complicated, it's a complicated topic. Alex Millimeter is right, higher density, sorry, lower density development costs more to maintain in the long run. All those things are right. It's a complicated issue. I agree with what, what, I support what's being discussed tonight of having RB. I don't think that that's in any way going to handicap our ability to work with developers to get greater value for development in primarily because Matthew Kirk is right. I think we have to leverage all of our tools to work with developers to get the better, the best developments that we can.
Hostway, this thing with the developer where they, they only want to do single-family houses, what, can you explain more like what they were thinking?
What they were thinking is hard to say because the, this was right after a decision was made about the PUD. So I think it's more a reaction to the public process and public hearings. So I don't know all that, the details that went into that. The other piece with the developers, developers are used to doing business the way they've done business. And they know their economies of scale and they know what works for them. So they don't want to reinvent the wheel on every development project. They want to stick to what they know that works for them. So for, I can't say all that, that work factored into the thinking of the last developer, I think part of it mostly came down to what, or what do they do well and them sticking to what they do well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So it is true, I guess, that, oh, I'm John Nuplink, Village of Yellow Springs. So I guess it's true that people often would, would like to comment about the things that happen near where they live. You know, I don't name any names, but right next to where I live, some property changed hands for the purposes of it not being developed. And, you know, there's no planning commission process that I can go to to be like, this, this piece of land should not be left empty, it's developable. The planning commission process is specifically to prevent, is built around making the development of land less dense or to prevent, prevent certain housing uses or prevent developments, not to encourage higher levels of density.
I want to object to that. It isn't about preventing anything. The planning commission process is to make sure that people's proposals follow the rules. That's it. It's just we're following the rules.
Correct. And the rules don't require people to build anything and they don't require people to build at a high level of density. If, for example, with nothing coming there, there's no planning commission process. If they'd decided to build a single-family house there, there would have been no planning commission process. Only if they decided to build a multifamily, since I live in RB, building there, would there have been a planning commission process? So if my position, which is my position, that I would like to see the highest level of density, especially directly next to me, there is no planning commission meeting that I can go to where I can be like, how dare these people leave this piece of land empty? How dare these people build only a single-family house? I want only apartments. Because the, the process does not, the apartments are allowed and the single-family is conditional or that leaving your property empty is conditional. You understand, it's, it's leaned a certain direction. And then I just did also want to indicate just how delicious Laura Curless's point about leaving the land at the lower level of density is in order to encourage higher levels of density, that you essentially require the developer initially, that the baseline, that you require them to do as little, to have as low density as possible in order that you can leverage that to get them to do higher density as opposed to just requiring them to do things that you want or letting them do things that you want. You require them to do things that you don't want, which seems perverse unless, of course, your goal is that you actually do want low density development. You understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak? Okay, then we're going to close the public hearing.
I think Matt wants to speak.
Matt, do you want to speak? No? Okay, I will reopen the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Very briefly, my name is Matt Rasca and I just wanted to speak and say that we're not necessarily talking in abstracts. We're talking about enabling more places for people to live, not just units, but places for people to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay, so what we are considering then is the annexation, changing the zoning density for any land at annexation from RA, low-density, to residential RB, moderate-density residential. And just for our clarification, it does permit, of course, single-family attached, it does permit single-family detached, and it does permit two-family. What is conditional is multifamily. So that's the only thing that is conditional.
And multifamily is apartment buildings?
Yes. Or, yeah. And that RB allows, what is it, how many units per acre? Is it 10?
I'm sorry?
RB allows-
Eight.
Eight units per acre.
Is that a, a motion?
Well, I haven't made a motion. I'm just saying, are, are we ready to have a motion? Stephen, why don't you make the motion?
Hold on.
It is, yeah, I'm seeing it. You, you have them in there, the text amendments?
Well, except it's not-
It's a 124204?
Yes.
It's 1242.
Yeah, I did that.
124204 annexed, oh, it's very tiny, that's why, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's there though.
Yeah, it's a pretty, it's a pretty small amendment.
Found it.
And then if we could briefly to address Ms. Curless's point as to whether or not there was a motion made at Planning Commission, do we think that that's, that there was not one made?
Because in reviewing, I mean, just to, again, split hairs, but that's what, you know, I'm here to do. The, the code would allow us, would allow Planning Commission to initiate this amendment at this point and then vote on it. There's nothing about timing-wise that has to happen between the two. So just to clean that up, could we first make a motion to initiate the amendment to 124204?
Okay, I move that, that we initiate an amendment to add 1242 annexation.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Now we are, now you can actually vote on the amendment for your recommendation to council.
Make a, a motion to change the zoning density for any land annexation from RA, low-density residential, to RB, moderate-density residential.
I second it.
All right, Zaremsky?
Uh, yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Osterholm?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Stiles?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Our next one is amend chapter 1248 residential districts. Add two-family, single-family attached, and multifamily as a conditional use in the RA, low-density residential district. Denise, would you like to talk about that?
Can you, can you repeat that?
Right, so-
Do you want me to repeat what I said?
So at the last meeting, we had a discussion about RA being mostly already platted. And we weren't sure how to get around that with the non-platted, that we thought we'd come back with a motion for non-platted RA. But then in talking with the solicitor, she felt that we could let it be in anywhere in RA if it's conditional because then that gives us that process. You want to explain this better than me?
Sure. So some conversations that we had at last, at the last meeting was that there was so much RA that is platted, if this change wasn't made, this amendment to the code might effectively mean nothing. So this would allow, the way it's drafted right now, it doesn't matter if you're a platted subdivision or not. Your RA, if you make this change, recommend this change and council proves it, that these additional uses are allowed as conditional uses there. And then what, what I would advise, when and if the time comes, was that a condition, that conditional use will be that the property owner, you know, get themselves squared away with their HOA or, or whatever the associations they're dealing with or their neighborhood, if it's just a council of neighbors or whatever. Does that make sense?
Because we right now have areas in RA that are platted and they're platted single-family. So if we're changing that, we need to-
Well, but the, and those are, you know, it's known as covenants restrictions if anyone lives in a subdivision. And those are private contracts between a property owner and their HOA or, or their neighborhood association, whatever it may look like. And the government, the village, has no part in that contract.
Right.
So we would be making this change. If somebody comes and, and staff report says, hey, this is a request for a conditional use to build, what, a two-family in an RA district? And, hey, FYI, Planning Commission, this is in a platted subdivision that says it's to be restricted, then one of the conditions on the approval would be that they have approval from their, whoever the entity is, typically an HOA.
And if there's not any HOA, in my opinion, it, by going through our public notification process, we're letting the neighbors know, so we've done our due diligence.
Right.
Okay, any questions for Denise or our attorney? Any comments?
So can you restate what you said about if there's not a covenant? I wasn't, I keep wanting to call it a coven, that's not what it is. If there's not a covenant.
Right.
If there's not, right? If there's not, well, if there's no entity that kind of, you know, because a lot of, I mean, I imagine that it's probably like on the south end of town, like a lot of those, there, are there HOAs or like, or is it just like agreements that you had with your neighbors when you bought the, yeah?
Probably not. A lot of, a lot of them just have like covenants and restrictions. Like, some of them, some of the plaques won't allow EDUs, all the covenants and restrictions. We don't have to follow that.
Sure.
Yeah, if there is no HOA, then- Yeah, if there is no HOA, then there's no legal entity that's managing that process, but it's still not ours to hold.
Got you. So I guess the second part of that question is if somebody said they wanted to build an ADU on that property, then, I mean, they have to come here, I mean, they'd have to come to.
They, well, you mean, that doesn't have an HOA?
Right.
Yeah, they would just come here, because it'd be a conditional use. All the neighbors would be notified that are budding or adjacent to them, and we put it in the paper. If nobody's going to raise an objection, or if somebody comes along and says, hey, they can't do that because of these covenants and restrictions, then that's something that is dealt with at that point.
And then the conditional use should be approved with a condition attached that says it's incumbent upon the applicant, the property owner, to clear themselves with their covenants and restrictions, whatever that may look like.
Got you.
Whether it's their HOA, or neighbors, or however that works.
Okay, anything else? If not, we will open this up to a public hearing. Anybody like to make a comment? Come forward, two minutes, and please give your name.
I'm going to ask for a little additional time.
And Mitzi, will you give your name?
Oh, my name's Mitzi Miller. I have a reading disability, so I am going to ask for a little more time. I don't, I'm going to read as fast as I can, but I think two minutes is not as much time needed on this important topic. While there is no question we need to be encouraging marketplace housing and development, can Yellow Springs truly become affordable to others? With higher taxes for all amenities like fire, safety, utilities, proposed increase in school levies, infrastructure needs, higher property taxes, and the village budget issues, how can affordability really be possible? The proposal made by the neighborhood, neighbors, for more neighbors, would like townhouses, two-family dwellings, multi-family housing permitted, used in all residential areas. It would also permit housing in downtown and business districts. Safeguards must be put in place for village and our property owners. Making these proposals a conditional use would involve all parties having a stake in the decision. We must all make sure height restrictions, parking setbacks, light issues are reevaluated and addressed appropriately. Currently, we have an infrastructure plan and water retention plan addressed in our current zoning to safeguard our villagers and our village. I personally see availability of lots being more expensive to purchase, the cost of building and materials being more expensive in Yellow Springs. And in other cities, zoning reform has impacted neighborhoods with more density, higher-cost homes in neighborhoods, property values going up, and parking, height and infrastructure issues, and also neighborhood feel and safety. Zoning reform has also impacted neighborhoods where buildings and investors are buying up old homes, smaller properties, tearing them down and building new for profit. I feel this is what will happen in Yellow Springs, since it's a desirable community that people want to live in. If you move this proposal forward, make sure to put the safeguards in place for villagers and property owners. Send a clear message to our pro-affordable council members, you are looking out for the best interest of all parties. Make sure you are representing our community and the real taxpayers of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, I'm.
Can I move this?
Hi, I'm John Hemfling, Yellow Springs. I think I have a little legal disagreement with Amy. From what I've read, there's, what?
Sorry, John, but she's a lawyer.
No, that's not why I was.
That's not why I was.
Okay. So from my understanding, you know, these covenants are entirely separate from the zoning code, they're just a parallel regime, both restrict the property owner entirely separately, and the village is under no obligation to help the neighbors enforce their covenants. The village is not bound by the covenants unless they owned the property, I guess, and then they'd be bound by it, if they'd bought a property that was bound by the covenant. So.
I totally agree.
Okay, great. So it doesn't, it would not be a, you know, taking to allow, as a permitted use, you know, a, say, making a two-family home in RA, even if it was prohibited by the covenant, the property owner would still need to relieve themselves of the covenant before they could build, otherwise they would be subject to civil suit by their, by their neighbors, perhaps. Okay, so you're, so you're, it's not that there's anything illegal about our proposal?
Except.
Okay.
Here's why I am, so what I'm hearing you say is that you are, would be a proponent of all of this being a permitted use and not conditional.
Correct.
Right. So here's where my concern and my role, right, is to mitigate risk for the village. And the property owners that live in those neighborhoods all have expectations based on their RA zoning and their subdivision plat. That doesn't involve us, but the RA's, you timed me, Judy? But the RA zoning does. I am also concerned about the rights and the, and the expectations of the neighbors that are not the ones looking to build the two-family, or the multi-family, or whatever may be happening, on neighboring lots. If they're given no process, we've talked about this a lot already tonight, if they're given no process, if they're given no notice, no opportunity to be heard, then perhaps they have a cause of action against the village. If researched this extensively, in Ohio, I'm seeing nothing on point. I'm not surprised to say that, because these are pretty unique ideas of what we're talking about here. So I'm not surprised to see that I'm not seeing a whole lot of other law in Ohio where something like this has been litigated to conclusion. So the best way to mitigate any risk to the village is to keep, is to keep all of this as conditional use. The opportunity is still there for a property owner who wants to take their property and turn it into something a little bit more dense than what it currently is. But those neighboring property owners do still have rights. And at the, at its very core, what is zoning, right? At its very core, zoning is the deprivation of constitutional rights, right? So we have to be careful to protect everyone's rights in the process, and that conditional use is what does that. And I'm not, I, we have no, we have no dog in the fight of covenants and restrictions and anything with an HOA and all of that. So, and sometime, if you guys, if we all have time, we should all go out and have a conversation about this more extensively, because I grew up in Houston, where there is no zoning, and I can talk extensively about how that works. And what it has done in Houston, it has risen to, it has allowed for the rise of very powerful HOAs, with a lot of ability to restrict property owners' rights that are willing to live in those neighborhoods and under those HOAs. So it's a push and a pull in either direction. So I'm going to, I stand by the recommendation of the conditional use. That is simply my advice. The village, of course, can do what it chooses to do, both at this level and at the council level.
So I would, I would highlight that, you know, allowing as a permitted use duplexes is not particularly unique. Our neighboring Fairborn already allows duplexes in all residential zones. So the, what's being recommended by Planning Commission at this point would still be more conservative, or restrictive, if you will, than what's allowed in the city of Fairborn.
Right. What I'm saying, when I say that I can't find any law on point in Ohio to address this, would be that I have not seen this very issue litigated, where neighbor who owns an RA single-family home and has an expectation that their neighborhood is single-family, then has their neighbor build a duplex, bringing their cause of action against whomever they may bring it against, and it would include the village. That I have, that I am not able to find any, any law or basis to support, one way or another, to suggest that we would have no exposure to those property owners and their expectations.
Right. I'd hypothesize that those cases don't exist, because that case would be considered frivolous, and therefore would never have been filed. That's just my theory.
I disagree.
Okay.
I disagree.
Respectfully disagree.
Yes, that is where we will, there, we got there. That's where we will disagree, because I do see, and so again, in an effort to mitigate risk.
And I do understand that a similar case did happen in Tex, in the state of Texas, but I'm just maintaining that that would not be the case in Ohio.
And, and, you know, this is, when we were here last month, talking about all of this, hasn't been a whole month? We, we were talking about this strictly outside of platted neighborhoods. This is far broader than that, right? This would be, this does not have that restriction on it. So it's a, like I say, it's a balancing act, trying to protect everyone's rights and mitigate, mitigate risk.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak?
So much to unpack with this.
Matthew, tell us your name again.
Matthew Kirk, 1745 South U Drive.
Thank you.
So again, I want to zoom back out and go, the whole purpose of this is to allow for, in this case, infill to be at a denser level than what's currently permitted in that residential district, right? So let's take an example, right? I own a lot next door to my house, and I want to develop that as a duplex, or a fourplex, or something like that. The difference in this from me, as the person who wants to develop that, is, under a conditional use plan, I've got to spend money for an architect, and to have all that stuff. You have to, you can't just come and say, I want to build something. You guys want to see pictures, like you said. People want to know, how tall is it going to be? You know, what's the design going to look like? What color is it? How many parking spaces is it going to have? And so you've got to spend all that money upfront, planning all that stuff, just to get it here. And then, again, assuming you follow the rules, it gets approved, but it is simply just a barrier to choosing that kind of project, when I could just go, single-family home, done. Right, so we want, we're trying to get people to do things that they wouldn't otherwise do, right? So in some ways, making it permitted is an incentive. As John was kind of alluding to last time, it was kind of a silly notion that, hey, we're going to, you know, make the zoning as low-density as possible so we can negotiate them into higher density, versus just approving them at higher density. Then, hey, we don't have to negotiate, like, we got what we wanted, easy-peasy, right? And we don't have to deal with the process. And I get that everybody wants to be heard in Yellow Springs, but that is not always a strength. I know we like to say that is the case, but often, I think we can all look at and say, wow, that really just gummed up the process. You know, and to some extent, everybody in Yellow Springs, they don't just want to have a say, we're all kind of experts, you know? And so you've got a whole room full of experts on any issue that you've got to deal with. Again, I'm the developer, who wants to deal with that? Nobody wants to deal with that. So again, we're trying to move the ball forward. You know, we can't just think from a conservative way. In fact, what we have to think of is really a traditional way. When we talk about there not being code in the zoning in Ohio, or whatever, part of that is because we used to not have zoning codes. Zoning codes were like a new thing in like the 50s and 60s, and like the automobile era. So what we're trying to do is kind of revert back to pre-car. I guess that's a good way to think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Anybody else? Alex?
To continue his thought, Alex, Walnut Street. Yeah, what I maintain is the really attractive part of town is the part that was built before zoning existed. And then, in that time, the expectation was porch on the street, front steps, park in the back. Our zoning code, we're not to the point where we can tell people that they have to have porches, and have to make the house look historic, but at least we should, you know, look to our ancestry and why, why this village is attractive, why people come here. You don't see the tourists, you know, walking around the Zone 8 district. And I guess that's kind of the point of low-density. I don't know, just a thought. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to speak?
I'm going to speak for the many people who live.
And Laura, introduce yourself.
Yeah, Laura Curlis, Village of Yellow Springs resident. You've got a lot of people who've maybe spent their lifetimes wishing, hoping, dreaming that someday they could have the house they want to live in. And sometimes, folks, that's single-family, with a yard for their kids, space for, to do their gardening, for their birds, for the wildlife. I like the wildlife. I mean, my kid's grown, but if I had kids, I would like the space for my kids. If I have a party, I have a place to put people on the lawn, I have a place for pollinator gardens. Goodness gracious, we're spending a lot of time talking about that. Why can't we have a mix of zoning that allows people to have the kind of house they want? And if they want, if I want to forego, you know, hunting, or beer drinking, or vacation, so I can afford that house, that's my choice. And why can't I have that here? This, this community, these folks seem bound and determined to get rid of single-family housing. And by the way, it's a myth that density equals affordable housing. And there is an opinion piece in the Cincinnati Inquirer in today's paper that says exactly that. Density does not equal affordability, subsidizing equals affordability. That's all true almost anywhere. It's not just here. I think you're going to have a fight on your hands if you take away people's value, and you take away their single-family zoning. I don't, I think it's going to be a problem. I think what we do need, and I've advocated this for a long time, we need apartments. We need you to zone some land where apart, and get serious about finding an apartment developer, because those kind of, those kind of houses are good for almost all sectors, young families, singles, downsizing seniors, they're affordable, that's what really I hope you will focus on. Thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you. Anybody else want to speak? And you haven't spoken yet on this, right?
No. No, not one of our half dozen amendments.
I'm getting confused.
My name's Matt Raska, I live over at South Stafford. And to speak directly to Laura, our proposal does not ban single-family homes whatsoever. It instead encourages apartments, and as I believe John said, like Fairborn, just allowing duplexes everywhere. And in fact, in Fairborn, you're allowed to build ADUs everywhere if it's for, basically in-home help, which is, you know, a little weird and icky to think that it's allowed, you're allowed to have a place for the help. But in any case, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who hasn't spoken, who'd like to speak? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. Do anyone on the planning have any questions, comments that they want to make? Well, I would just say that I, I like this. This doesn't stop anybody from having their single-family home on their big lot, but I also know people who have enormous lots in the village, and if they, or somebody later on, would like to divide that, and then put up duplex, fourplex, whatever, it would permit that. It would be a conditional use. So I think it does give more opportunities. My guess is there aren't going to be a whole lot that are going to use this, but it opens up that possibility, and this is a starting place. You know, we can see how it goes, and maybe then in a couple of years, there may be more changes that were needed. But I think probably this is a step in the right direction.
So Susan, I want to jump onto what you said, and just, you know, sort of go along with this point, that, you know, people, you know, Laura's sort of getting into this thing, people, sometimes people, their houses are their primary asset, they don't have a lot of other savings, and, you know, and what their, what their neighbors do can have a big impact on the value of their house. You know, we've had in these meetings, the people who get the most upset are the people, you know, when we were doing the thing with that, on the south side of town, all the folks around there who liked that old field, you know, they were really upset that it was changing. So change, you know, it just, it's, you know, people don't really want things to change. And especially if it's going to change the value of your house. So this is a balance, you know, we're trying to find a balance here between, you know, having more opportunities for people to live here, but also protecting the value of the other people's houses that are already here.
Can I ask one question or respond?
Sure, sure.
What, I'll step to the mic, I'll fix it, can you hear me? What kind of evidence do we have that if somebody builds a duplex next to your house, that that has a negative impact on your value? Because I'll be honest, sitting out here, when I hear that kind of stuff, it makes me cringe, because it sounds really classist. It's like, you're going to bring these potential poor people, and let's be clear, if we build a duplex, it'd probably be like two, $300,000 sides to the duplex, so you're not really dealing with that. But the way it sounds is, I don't want poor people moving next to me, because that may impact the price of my house.
Thank you. I don't think that there is any evidence, unless anybody has done a study, that it lowers the value of property in Yellow Springs. What, you know, from what I have seen, looking at values of property, is the values of property in Yellow Springs keep going up. And it's amazing what people pay for a house that you could get in another community for much less. So, you know, I, you know, there may be some cases, but, you know, it's hard to say. Any other comments that anybody wants to?
I'm sorry, go ahead. So this still keeps the conditional use intact on this?
Yes.
Okay. And, hey, we already got a prime example of, I mean, how many millions of dollars did that field get sold for that Max said he played in that, there's a dump there? And that was still worth millions of dollars, for Yellow Springs? And that was still worth millions of dollars, in Yellow Springs?
One of the things that's really interesting is, just to kind of speak to what you said, it does feel that way. It feels that way for a lot of reasons. It feels, it burgeoning, it burgeoning on that, just because I'm, you know, I have a particular sensitivity to that. And also, I want everybody to know that Fairborn is a sundowntown. So, a sundowntown, a conservative town next to us, has less restrictive zoning than we do. That's, so, I mean, these are the things that I think about. And I understand, I understand everybody's right to quiet enjoyment, and I understand that that could, you know, that could potentially get litigious, but it, this is, this is a very, this is a very interesting thing to watch unfold.
Terry?
Yeah. Actually, what, the whole thing with Fairborn, that I, that my takeaway is, I've always heard that, see, Fairborn's a very transient community, because of the thousands of people that come in and out, you know, from the base, people that live there two, three years. So, Fairborn, there's a lot of elements of Fairborn that are set up for people coming in and out, a lot of rentals, a lot of apartments, a lot of stuff, and I'm sure this, my sense is the zoning has been set up...
Reflects that, absolutely.
Yeah, reflects that. I think that's really the thing. The one thing I'd like to emphasize, it's interesting, at least half of the comments that people have made have all been based on, either agree or disagree, on somebody's going to do this, or somebody's going to do that, or somebody's not going to do this, or somebody's not going to do that. In reality, this zoning change that we're making is just a zoning change. It's simply, it's an allowance to do something that you had not been allowed to do before, and there's absolutely no guarantee whatsoever that anybody will do anything, because any of these different housing options that we all talk about requires somebody with, with the wherewithal, and assets, and motivation to do whatever it is. And that's, all these different things that people want to see done, that's what needs to happen, is try to nurture and develop people who want to do these certain things, because changing the zoning code, this change, the zoning code, doesn't make any of those things happen. So, I just want to point that out.
Thank you. I'm going to move this along by, I'm going to make a motion that we amend Chapter 1248 residential districts, add two-family, single-family attached, and multifamily as a conditional use in RA low-density residential district.
I'll second.
Could we have the vote?
Zarimski?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Green?
Yes.
Osterholm?
Yes.
Stiles?
Yes. Okay, there is a note for us to consider, do we want to continue our agenda, or do we want to put this on for next month? Table it for, until next month.
Someone needs to move to table it?
I'll second that.
Now, does someone, someone needs to move to table it?
Oh, I will move to table it.
I'm sorry, move to table the next two...
What's left on the agenda?
The next, it's one, two, three, four, five that we would have to vote on.
Oh, is it five more?
Yes. And, and was there a second?
Is there an option for us to do these all at once, and do a hearing on all five at once?
No, because they're text amendments, so we really should keep them separate for...
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Okay, so there was a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
You're opposed? Anybody else opposed? Just one opposition? Okay, so we will table the rest of the amendments until next month. Okay? Is there any other new business that we need to be looking at for next month?
I don't have anything.
You have some text amendments on the agenda.
Well, I have a proposed text amendment, but we have not adjourned yet.
We have not adjourned.
What?
Yeah, we haven't.
I'll wait till next month, I guess, to make mine.
We haven't adjourned, but I... Not adjourned.
We need to adjourn. All those in favor, I move that we adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, we're adjourned. Why can't someone move to adjourn?